Good evening. The March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey? Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
We have six council members present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just ask that everyone bow their heads in silence. Again, we celebrated the deaths that happened with COVID, and I would just like everyone to take a moment of silence to recognize everyone that has perished and continues to suffer from this pandemic. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
Yes, Madam Chair, I wanted to acknowledge too that Madam Legislative Council Linda Schuett and our county auditor Susan Smith are also present. I neglected to call their names at the start there.
I forgive you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in reasonably accessible places to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-nineteen emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the various executive orders issued by the governor and the county executive that limit public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any forum review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four-ten-two-two-two-four-four-one-three.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one comment from a member of the public. The entire council received copies. These have been posted to the website and added to the meeting file.
Thank you. And we do not have any individuals signed up to speak this evening, therefore invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Mr. Pruski?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if it's appropriate here, but I did fail during the prayer to mention, if you don't mind for a point of personal privilege, Bob Pascal, former county executive who served in Anarondale County, passed away this week, and I thought that to offer condolences to his daughters and his family. Again, regardless of party, he served this county well in the Senate and also as county executive, so I think it's important just to recognize his service and his family. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Pruski. Any other council member? No? Okay, we'll move on. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilwoman Radvian.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing now, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March first, twenty twenty-one.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at six PM. Chris Beatty, lead pastor of Hope Springs Church, gave the invocation, and Mr. Volkey led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. The auditor's office was represented by the county auditor, Susan Smith.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March first, twenty twenty-one?
Councilwoman Radvian, so moved.
Allison Pruski, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of March first, twenty twenty-one stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number twenty-seven-twenty-one, An ordinance concerning public works, permits for use of county rights of way, maintenance permit, and inspection fees. Bill number twenty-eight-twenty-one, An ordinance concerning subdivision and development, community meetings.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one, Resolution confirming the reappointment of an Anarondale County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee. Resolution number twenty-one-twenty-one, A resolution expressing the need for land located in Severn Maryland and owned by the Anarondale County Board of Education for the Severn Intergenerational Center. Resolution number twenty-two-twenty-one, Resolution appointing Michelle E. Bollier as county auditor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules and hear and vote on bill number sixteen-twenty-one out of order and first this evening?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Councilwoman Radvian, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey? Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The motion to hear and vote on bill number sixteen-twenty-one out of order and first this evening is adopted.
Thank you. May I also have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolution number twenty-one-twenty-one this evening?
Councilwoman Radvian, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey? Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The motion to vote on resolution number twenty-one-twenty-one this evening has been adopted.
Thank you. And as a point of order for everyone, we will vote on resolution numbers twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two-twenty-one this evening. They are both appointment resolutions. Okay, going into our bills. Bill number sixteen-twenty-one, Madam Secretary, please read the title of said bill, your decision.
Bill number sixteen-twenty-one, An ordinance concerning personnel positions in the exempt service police department.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Baron, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Pete Baron with the administration. As the team populates here, I just want to say thank you for accommodating us this evening to bump this bill up to the front of the agenda. Our chief here is with us, Chief Alwood from Personnel. We have Ms. Bedowski, Ms. Atkinson, and I think Ms. Collins was having connection problems earlier. They may have been resolved. From Budget, Mr. Teroux, and from Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. There I see Ms. Collins. So just a real quick, Bill sixteen-twenty-one increases one police major position and one police chief of staff position. These positions exist in the exempt service, but are currently unused. The bill creates the exempt title and adds the position in the exempt service for the executive assistant to the police chief, and then decreases one administrative secretary to the department agency head. I'm going to ask our chief to speak to why she views these positions as critical to achieving her goals. And before I do that, since I worded that a little funny, I'm going to say the administration fully supports the chief's goals in what she's trying to achieve here. So Chief, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Good evening, council members. How are you this evening? I thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'll speak to the three requested positions. All three positions are consistent with our vision for this year into next year, and we call them the three Cs. The first being community policing, the second being crisis intervention, and the third being communications. All three of these positions tie in to our focus for this year. It's my intent to, and I'm asking for your consideration, for the position of an executive assistant to me. This person will serve as a Director of Legislative Affairs, will oversee executive administration, and communications, a very critical component for us. We have a relatively new communications team, and this person will bring a level of experience and guidance and direction to help us improve in our communications. We do a lot of really great work here in Anarondale County, and we feel it's important to not just highlight our successes, but also speak to the who, what, when, where, why during critical incidents and events that are newsworthy or noteworthy. So we're looking forward to building a more robust communications plan. So this person will oversee the development of that plan in addition to, again, providing guidance and oversight for our Media Relations Division. Right now, they report directly to me, and this person would vastly improve the service we provide to the community, and it would vastly assist me so I can focus on more of my responsibilities as the police chief. This person would also manage the day-to-day operations of the Office of the Chief. As you can imagine, we get a high volume of incoming meeting requests, electronic communications, and written correspondence on a daily basis. And right now, I don't have a person sitting in the position to manage all of these affairs, and so a lot of the work is falling on myself and the deputy chiefs. So I really appreciate your consideration on supporting this position. The next position is the chief of staff position. This person will help us facilitate our mission, our vision, our values. That person will report directly to me and serve as a trusted advisor to me, but also the deputy chiefs in helping us oversee and manage some of the newer programs that we are proposing this year, some of the current programs that are already in place. For example, we have the Body Warm Camera Program. We have program managers, but I'd really appreciate someone who could oversee how that flows, keep us on task, keep us on schedule so that that program rolls out smoothly. That this person would also serve in my absence. I get a number of meeting requests. I know I'm still relatively new, and I can't be in two or three places at the same time. This person would stand in my absence to help me out in terms of getting out in, right now, the virtual world, meeting with community members. I have a Citizens Advisory Council and a Business Advisory Council. I meet with them, but that person could also stand in my absence. So this person would vastly assist with balancing the diverse schedule, attending meetings, and when there's a conflict, provide for fill-in, follow-up, and answering any clarifying points that may be at the conclusion of any meeting. And again, this person will oversee vital programs like the Body Warm Camera Program, the Reentry Program that we are in the research and development phase on, and also researching and evaluating mentoring programs tying into community policing on our short and long-term response to critical issues throughout the county. But the overall goal is to create more opportunities for community engagement. And then the last position is that of the police major. I will be proposing, and I ask for your consideration and support, right now. We have the Bureau of Patrol, the Bureau of Operations and Investigations, and the Bureau of Administration, and I'm proposing a renewed focus and a renewed energy and a renewed emphasis on community policing, and I'd like to build out and expand our community policing programming to provide for greater opportunities and collaboration with regard to training our officers on the importance of building relationships, problem-solving, critical thinking. So we're seeking training opportunities outside of our traditional classroom and looking at opportunities to bring in folks from academia to help us. Some of the programs that you're aware of that tie into this, that would tie into this this bureau focus around a lot of our diversion programs, our youth programs, the Police Explorer Program, the Youth Activities Program, the Fresh Start Pre-Ares Divergent Program, all very beneficial programs to help our young people make better decisions. And we could really use the, this position to grow out our young, our programs for our youth. One of the units that fall under this bureau is our Crisis Response Team. That encompasses our Crisis Intervention Team and our Mobile Crisis Teams. We're seeing an increase in the demand for their presence and their assistance, particularly, we're experiencing an increase in emergency evaluations. We're seeing an increase, an ever-increasing number of either attempted suicides or suicides altogether. And it's our intent to build out this unit. The staffing right now is one supervisor. Many of you know Lieutenant Steve Thomas, who partners with Jan Corbin. And then there are eight officers that are dedicated to this unit. We're asking for additional officers this year to help us, help this unit continue to provide service. But in the midst of this pandemic, we do take note that we're seeing an increase. Folks are home, they're lonely, they're depressed, they're despondent, and they're calling us, and our officers are responding. But since we are one of the only crisis response teams in the state, not only do they provide twenty-four-hour service to our community, but they also get invited to other jurisdictions to help them stand up their very own crisis response teams. So they're getting pulled in many directions, and I don't want to exhaust our resources, but I don't want to deny other jurisdictions' help either. I think it's a very good program. The community, the recipients, the clients appreciate it. And just last week, I know that this body was presented by, Mr. Delp presented on behalf of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and he spoke to our Crisis Response Team. But he also spoke to the fact that not a lot of people know what we do or the service we provide, and this ties into not just the community policing piece, but the communications piece. We need to do a better job of letting the community know that this service is available to everyone throughout Anarondale County. And I'll just talk to some of the numbers. The Mobile Crisis and the Crisis Intervention Team, they handle approximately a hundred and twenty calls per week. That's a lot to disperse over, you know, eight people. And they're also, for FY nineteen, they conducted one thousand three hundred and fifteen follow-up visits. So as you know, the relationship does not stop at the first call for service. It's only the beginning, and then our Crisis Response Team partners with the individual who needs, whatever the issue is, who needs guidance, assistance, referral. They shadow that person along the way to get them to where they need to be in terms of recovery or help. And then they fielded eight thousand one hundred and fifty-nine follow-up phone calls. So there's a lot of work put into not just responding in the immediacy of the moment, but the follow-up, helping people get to their appointments, and then follow-up conversations. So the relationship develops over time to help people, and that's why we're here. I just want to highlight that all of our Crisis Response Team officers, as you may know, you know, are certified through crisis intervention training. They just were recognized as the Crisis Intervention Team. That was an international recognition, so that speaks volumes to the program that we hold right here. We're very, very, very proud of the work that our officers perform. So I ask for your consideration for these three positions, and I hope that you'll support and vote for this bill.
Thank you very much, Chief Alwood. Do we have any questions from the council at this time? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. My question is for the chief. Chief, thank you for coming out this evening. So for the executive assistant to the chief of police, for all of the items and tasks that you listed here tonight that that person would be responsible for, obviously, those are still getting done, and I can't imagine that they're all being done by you. So how are you managing currently all of those tasks and covering bases?
It's challenging. I am managing as best I can. One of the deputy chiefs is assisting me, but, you know, it, the demand for being present and, you know, pulling together PowerPoint presentations, pulling together talking points, creating follow-up communications, it's overwhelming. And so we could really use, in addition to the person, you know, taking on administrative tasks, this legislative session, you know, I rely on the Maryland chiefs more so than being so much engaged as I could be because my focus, I'm actually serving as a chief, but an administrative chief as well. So it gets to be a bit taxing. It would give me a lot more flexibility and freedom to do, you know, perform chief duties versus being bogged down by administrative processes.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. On the timing of this, obviously, the budget season is coming up rapidly, and so if this bill's not effective for forty-five days, we're at the March one date already when the budget would sort of be in the county council's hands for consideration. I'm trying to understand why now as opposed to part of the budget.
Now?
Well, Chief or Mr. Baron, would you like that question to go to?
Yeah, I think Pete Baron with the administration. I think it would allow us to get the process started faster for hiring, and since Ms. Bedowski is nodding, that's who I'm going to turn it to.
Ann Bedowski, Acting Personnel Officer, good evening. Yes, allowing, sixteen-twenty-one will allow the chief to bring this personnel on sooner than the July first date, which would be part of the budget process. As noted by Mr. Baron earlier, these classifications already exist in law, and they are just being added to the department at this time. But it would allow her to bring them on board and get up to speed as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will now open the public hearing on bill number sixteen-twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for bill number sixteen-twenty-one.
Okay, and we do not have any individuals signed up to speak on the bill this evening, so the public hearing on bill number sixteen-twenty-one is now closed. I understand we have amendments. Mr. Baron, these are your amendments, I think?
Yes, they are. Madam Chair, Pete Baron with the administration. These are basically corrective amendments. They are making sure that the bill matches the description the chief gave.
Okay. Actually, I think, did I misspeak? It's just one amendment, sorry. Is there a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pruski, motion to adopt.
And a second?
Second, Allison Pickard, D two.
Thank you. Let's see, is there any discussion, unless, Mr. Baron, you wanted to say more?
Please move the amendments.
Okay. It appears there's no discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Madam Chair, I did not read in the description.
Oh, you were silent during that time. Maybe something was missing.
Waiting for the prompt. I'm happy to do that.
Very sorry, very sorry.
This amendment adds the position Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police to the exempt pay and benefit plan and adds the title to the list of exempt positions. Approves a decrease of one administrative secretary to department slash agency head position in the police department as part of the FY twenty-one budget, and approves an increase in one executive assistant to the chief of police position as part of the FY twenty-one budget.
Okay, I don't know that we really need to redo the motion to adopt, doing, Madam Secretary.
I'm not certain that you do. Perhaps your parliamentarian should make that call. But you did the motion. It's been seconded.
Okay, I think we're fine. No one seems to object. So let's go ahead and proceed with calling the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent this evening. Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The amendment to bill sixteen-twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Bill number sixteen-twenty-one, as amended, will be heard on April fifth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Chief. Great to see you.
Thank you for your consideration and support.
And thank you to the panel. Have a good evening. Okay, bill number eleven-twenty-one is next. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eleven-twenty-one.
Bill number eleven-twenty-one, An ordinance concerning planning and zoning, general development plan, Plan Twenty-Forty.
So as a reminder to everyone, we closed the- So as a reminder to everyone, we closed the public hearing on, at our last meeting, March first. And we held the vote until tonight, which means there's no public hearing this evening. But what we do have are lots of amendments. We certainly can take our normal opportunity to have lots of discussion. Before we roll into amendments, and that's probably what we ought to do, I would think. So does anyone have any general? Questions before we would move into amendments? Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, I was gonna wait. I'm withdrawing Amendment Number Ten as a matter of the record. There's some additional items that I worked with another council member, so we don't even have to read that into the record. So again, I'm withdrawing. Amendment Number Ten, and thank you, Ms. Fiedler, for calling me today. But we are working on that, so I don't want to waste anybody's time, but let's let's remove that right now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. Pete Barron with the administration. We have the the same group of of folks and it's it's quite a. A big group, so I just want to give a quick round robin of who has joined us. To help answer any questions that may come up. From the administration, there's myself, Mr. Johnston and Ms. Rhodes. From OPZ, we have Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Carrier, Mr. Stringer, Ms. Pampa, Mr. Will Donger, Mr. Hughes. From ACDS, Ms. Coke from Wreckin' Parks, Ms. Matthews from Transportation, Ms. Erzum McIntosh. From Health, Mr. Herb from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer and Ms. Kenny. I I would love, if if I may, before we jump to further discussion or amendments, I do want to. Make a couple of quick points. I want to thank Mr. Pruski for for working with us on. What would have been Amendment Ten and just reiterate that. The discussion I thought at the work session was very good and and we're going to get there on achieving that goal and. Happy to speak to any other council member as as we get that moving. Councilwoman Fiedler, you had a question at the work session related to the Bay Bridge. And I don't believe we circled back around to it at the end of Thursday. And I wanted to just make the point and flag that. We are working up a detailed written response and and will provide that and happy to share that with the entire council if if you are. Interested or discuss it at a at a future meeting. We just weren't able to pull it all together before tonight. And and in that same vein, I want to take another moment to talk a little bit more. About the staff recommendation, the S R and the Luca discussion. That I know Madam Chair brought a couple of questions to us as well as several other members, so. I just want to reiterate a couple of points, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Carrier to say a few words and then. Answer any questions you may have. So first, the the staff recommendations. To the land use map are the result of a detailed multi-year review by the planning experts. These recommendations are just that recommendations. The recommendations, once adopted with Plan Twenty Forty, will then go to the. Regional planning committees who will have the opportunity to comment and make their own recommendations before these changes. Then come back forward to the council in comprehensive zoning. And that's really why this plan is unique. While it it provides input from the experts. It gives our communities the power to have a say in the future land use map and comprehensive zoning. Through the regional planning process. We discussed at the previous work session, I can't recall if it was Tuesday or Thursday. About the many, many data points and information that the staff used. To analyze and come to their recommendations for both the S Rs and the Lukas. We will be providing the council with that data as as soon as we've we've gathered it all up together. We hope to do that. Before the end of this week. Ms. Carrier, maybe you can speak a little bit more sort of on the broad scopes of what the. Data was looked at by staff.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Barron. So, and this is not in the plan, so I would like to clarify maybe the methodology that we went through. With the staff recommendations. You know, as noted by the Office of Law previously, I think at the Thursday work session. It's the responsibility of the Office of Planning and Zoning to comprehensively comprehensively review. Prepare and update the land use map in accordance with the state law and the county charter. So we went through. You know, an exercise of comprehensively reviewing the entire county, looking for inconsistencies between existing land use. Existing zoning, developed density. And we used, as Mr. Barron said, many factors. I think we had at least over eighty factors that we reviewed. The most important are the criteria listed in Volume Two on page one fifteen. Which include consistency with current zoning, consistency with existing use. Looking at the surrounding planned land use, looking at transition areas that have occurred. So we we reviewed the entire county and then we did not. Do specific sites. Again, it was an entire countywide review. But we did use our aerial aerial photography and we actually have pictometry, which is like Google Street View. To get down into maybe any of the questions that we have. We also relied on our staff knowledge. We've we have, a lot of us live in the county. Plus, we also have been reviewing development applications in these areas for a number of years. Once the vision and the development policy area maps were. Drafted with assistance from the Citizens Advisory Committee. We weighed the criteria and came up with essentially sixty-seven. Areas for staff recommended changes. Fifty-eight of those were to provide consistency. And nine of them were to. Were to recommended for better alignment of goals and policies that had been drafted. All all of the owners of these sixty-seven areas, which included fifteen hundred and twenty individual properties. Were notified by mail in early September. We received maybe three percent of those were not delivered, but fairly confident that the majority of the property owners were. Were notified. We received letters from many of them. Some of them support, some of them did not support. And through additional discussions. Along with public comments. So all of these went out for three different public comment periods. So not only did the. Property owners receive notification, but the public was able to comment on these. The online open house between August and September. The preliminary draft review, which occurred forty-five days between September thirtieth and November fifteenth. And the Planning Advisory Board review process. Between December ninth and January sixth, twenty twenty-one. And so that all boiled down into. Reviewing those, taking into that, taking in the public comment and the property owner. Comments into consideration and we withdrew three of those applications. So before you are sixty-four of those. The Planning Advisory Board affirmed sixty-three of those recommendations. One of them. They wanted to revise, it's SR twenty-two, that's an area. West of Solly Road. And most of that has transitioned. It was a commercial. Commercial area on the land use map, but had developed with townhouses. They asked that one of the properties be retained and commercial and we agreed, so, but the remaining. Of that area is recommended for low density. Also part of the process, we included opportunities throughout for property owners to. Submit land use change request. That's not a requirement, but we felt like it would be. In our in our best interest to be able to ask for applications and have the time to perform. An evaluation instead of potentially receiving lots of applications. After it's introduced to council. Or amendments, it would be amendments. They wouldn't have been an application process. It would have been amendments. So the same methodology was used. Same. Criteria was used. Should be noted that the original one hundred and eighty-nine land use change applications that we received. In late October, between October. And November of twenty nineteen, we did do, we did conduct site visits. And those were all evaluated. We eventually have, well, one hundred and eighty-two. Were evaluated for recommendations. Seven of those were withdrawn. Went through the same process. The Planning Board affirmed all of those except for one. Which was received during, it was an application that was received during the Planning Advisory Board review and. They had recommended that the land use change to industrial, that's P A B R O one. And we did not agree with that application. And that's all I have. That's all I have unless you have questions on that methodology.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. Mr. Barron, did you want someone else to speak or shall we open for more questions?
It it is up to the council. We are, we are good. We wanted to provide that context and just as a reminder, we will be providing with. You with some pretty detailed spreadsheets in the coming days for your review.
Well, so I I have a follow-up question on that then. Can you commit to a to a date? I would like to know because, as you all know, there's a, you know, a lot of amendments. To be drafted still, and I think it would just be helpful if if we knew. We can kind of plan out our our workload if we had an idea of a specific date you expect to have it ready by.
I would say we expect to have it ready by Friday of this week, but our goal will be to beat that deadline and get it to you.
Tomorrow. Christina Pampa with OPZ tomorrow.
I like it. Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions at this time? Or comments on the G D P? Okay, I don't think so. Doesn't look like it. Okay, it's not your last chance, that's all right. Madam Secretary, I believe you have. Amendments ready to show up on the screen, right? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, are we ready to move into amendments?
We are. Please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment changes the target start date for the second set of region plans to December twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Councilman Pruski, motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you. So I'm the sponsor, Mr. Pruski, Ms. Pickard are co-sponsors on this amendment. It's it's pretty simple. We didn't think it would be such a good idea to start the second round right before or at the end of the election process and let the new council. Be present for the very beginning of that second round of region plans. Is there any discussion? Or comment from the administration? Or both? Ms. Hare.
I can defer to Mr. Barron if if the administration wants to respond.
Thank you. Pete Barron with the administration, we support this amendment. It it's really a, it's a target start date and it it just makes sense to to move it to December. It'll give us a little bit more time and. And we support.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I'm a little concerned just because the G D P has been so delayed already. And I know community members are already concerned about the fact that we're only doing three at a time and and things like that, that. Things tend to get pushed out. It's rare that things happen early, and so I'm concerned that if we bump the target date to December, it will actually be even. Even later than that. And I'm just wondering, I guess maybe from the sponsors, was was that considered that even with the target date of October? It wouldn't surprise me if it ends up being a little bit late anyways.
Well, unless Mr. Pruski or Ms. Pickard want to jump in, I will just say that. I think at this point, I mean, all we can do is plan. Nobody can really guarantee what the schedule will be like, but I think even with that in mind, I. I just don't agree that if we can avoid a a transfer. A council handover in the middle of a region plan, I think that's probably better for the regions that are under consideration at that time. Anyone else? Anything to add? No? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Raviyan.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski, I'm sorry, Ms. Excuse me, that was supposed to be Ms. Pickard, my. Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski, I have a yes recorded for you. Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Five in the affirmative, one in the negative and one absent. Amendment Number One to Bill eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment sets the region plan schedule as follows. The first set will be regions two, four. And seven. The second set will be regions one, three and nine. And the third set will be regions five, six and eight.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard, D two.
Thank you. This amendment is sponsored by Mr. Pruski, Ms. Pickard and myself. Mr. Pruski, you have the floor.
Thank you. For the benefit of a summary, for those of you that don't know, at the work session. And several other conversations, public conversations, the council has to make a decision on the order of the regional plans. There was a C A C recommendation and there was an alternative recommendation. Again, just to kind of reiterate. The rationale that was used for the current proposal obviously was urgency. Moving different areas so that not every council member or a council member has every region aspect. For those of you that don't know. Typically, except one or two, every region does have multiple council members in it. And again, this is a hybrid of what was recommended by the Citizen Advisory and the Alternative Plan, as stated, and I'll just leave it that. Thank you.
Mr. Barron?
The administration supports this amendment as if, as we discussed during the work session. The the plan specifically laid out two options. We didn't speak to a. Specific plan, knowing that it's. It's a tough decision any way you go and and it's right for this decision to sit in the hands of the council. So with that. We support this approach. This makes sense.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I had just a couple of questions and I I wanted to actually thank Councilman Pruski for talking to me about this amendment. District Seven has four different regions in it and so, you know, as I can. As I'm looking at all the different moving parts, I know other council members have several regions in theirs as well, and I can appreciate that no matter what. Three regions go first and three regions go last, and so we're all sort of in a tough spot no matter what. I guess I had two questions and maybe the first question is for planning and zoning as to. I see that there are the C A C proposed reasons, regions, but the alternative option regions, how did planning and zoning come up with those?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Pampa.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The order that is in Volume One for the region plans. Was basically derived based on our perception of growth pressure. You know, there are a lot of different ways you can slice up region plan order. And it's almost like an infinite number of options that you can come up with. This is just two options looking, you know, one was the C A C recommendation. This is just two options looking, you know, one was the C A C recommendation which was derived through a vote using Survey Monkey. And then the staff recommended which was really looking at growth pressure. But there are obviously a lot of other factors that can be considered.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, may I ask one follow-up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I think maybe this is a question for the sponsors of the amendment. The P A B, when they got a hold of it, specifically mentioned the Route Three corridor and the pressure there and. And suggested perhaps that that area be done. Early on and in this suggestion, it's done at the end, was there, was that a specific, was that intentional or is there some other factor that I'm not aware of?
So I think it's the end, oh, sorry, Councilman Pruski, Madam Chair, if I can get recognized.
If I ever stop writing my notes, you can, yes, Mr. Pruski.
Sorry, Councilwoman Hair, very, very good question, I think it's the inverse actually. Because if you were to have Route Five go first, the traffic wouldn't be solved, and if you look at the budget this year. One of the things that, and I'm sure Mr. Barron or somebody can discuss, we have a plan to address some of the Route Three traffic, but that's gonna take. Three to five years, so the question is, are you looking at the property owner or the traffic? The additional piece that you and I talked about was the moratorium, which we are, you know, kind of look at that from that end to see where it would fit. And also, the highest number of applications obviously is in Fort Meade, which we're going first. Obviously, five is second, but I think again, just from my perspective, I think it's unfair. To obviously have my entire district go first, because if you were to do, you know, four and five respectfully. Everyone else is kind of like, oh, fine, so, you know, from that area, so I think that's kind of how you look at it. But now, if you can recall, you and I talked, and that's why I flipped five and nine, because you mentioned that you wanted eight, nine first. And I have a, a different perspective that eight, nine maybe would go last. Because there's the least amount of growth in South County, everybody doesn't kind of want it, so again, it's how you slice and dice it whatever way, but that's kind of the rationale from that end, thank you.
Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hair, District Seven, okay, I appreciate that, I was hearing from constituents in. Who live in the Region Five area that they are concerned about waiting. Because they're afraid without a cohesive plan for that area in the interim that. Essentially, growth would, would be unchecked and unable to have any kind of. Cohesion to it if we're waiting that long, but that's, that's helpful to hear. The opposite perspective, I, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Mr. Pruski.
Yes, Councilman Pruski, I think this is an important fact, and I, I did mention in prior sessions too, Ms. Hair, you bring up a, a Councilwoman Hair, you bring up a good point. A lot of people have a hard time understanding, they think that the general development plan stops development. And that is not true, right, if you have development by, and the rules are listed. It's easy for, say, to somebody that lets downzone or changes, until we actually change that plan or area. We can't do anything, and also the traffic in terms of adequate facilities and schools, we have rules and laws to do that, so I'm not only interested. In reviewing these regional plans, but the policy we put in effect with our adequate facilities for not only roads. But also to our schools, I think those things are going hand in hand, and I think planning and zoning, the conversations that I've had with them, they are looking forward to that as well, I know they made some recommendations. Through this plan to kind of look at that alignment, so I'll, I'll let it go, but if they want to add anything else, they can, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rothian.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Five in the affirmative, one in the negative and one absent, amendment number two to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three. This amendment clarifies that the listed uses are anticipated uses for Plan Twenty Forty planned use. Planned land use designations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Okay, Ms. Hair, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hair, District Seven, so I think it's table seventeen. In, in the G D P, it has this, this chart and it talks about how there's permitted slash anticipated uses, and I had a number of questions from constituents because. There are only a handful of, and I should have mentioned, sorry, it's page seventy in the, in volume, nope, just kidding. I'll end the page in a second, it's table seventeen.
One sixteen.
Thank you.
Volume two.
Here we go, volume two. So table seventeen, you can see the three columns and on the third one, it says permitted anticipated uses, but what they've listed are certainly not. All of the permitted uses and some of them actually are by special exception or conditional uses, and I had a number of residents reach out to me and ask me if by using the word. Permitted slash anticipated uses, we were somehow implying that every use listed here would go from being conditional or special exception to. Permitted and that was our intent and I, I didn't think so, so I reached out to planning and zoning and said. Hey, do you have any issue with just calling these all anticipated uses and instead of using the word permitted? I believe planning and zoning is okay with this change, but they can confirm for me, and so that's all it does, it just deletes the word permitted from it, so there's no confusion.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Pete Barron with the administration, I won't speak for OPZ, but the administration supports this amendment, we agree. With, with Councilwoman Hare's description, I, I do think the, the word. Raised some people's eyebrows and that was not the intent, Ms. Pompa, do you have anything to add there?
I, Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning, basically echo what Mr. Barron has said. We are fine with the amendment to remove the word permitted from page one hundred and sixteen in volume two.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rothian.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, amendment number three to bill eleven, number twenty-one is adopted.
When you are ready, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number four.
Yes, ma'am, amendment number four. This amendment adds language. To implement, implementation strategy D for goal H C eight and policy H C eight point one under planning for healthy communities to include parks and points of interest. And adds language to require that certain types of trails in the southern half of the county be included in a comprehensive countywide trails plan.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hair, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Ms. Hair, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hair, District Seven, Ms. Cory's reading of it, Ms. Corby's reading of it is basically exactly what it is, and we discussed this a little bit at the work session last week. We have some incredible trails in, in parts of the county, parts of the county were really kind of lacking that amenity and. In the past, when we've spoken about comprehensive network of trails, it's often referred to in only the northern half of the county or. A little bit of the western part of the county, it's very difficult to get sort of a comprehensive plan for the southern, southern half of the county. And, and so I would just, I would just like to make it clear that when the general development plan uses the phrase a comprehensive. Plan for countywide trails, that we really are meaning north to south and east to west, that the, the whole county should be included as part of that. And certainly that we should continue to expand the network in the northern part and the, and the western piece and also. Put a comprehensive plan in place for the southern part of the county, so I hope you will join me in, in that.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration, echo our comments at, at the work session, we support this amendment.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'm envisioning a giant ring of trails around Odenton where everyone can meet up and you can. Put your bikes on the train, go north and south from there. Nope, no comments or questions, okay, that's just an idea, that's not part of the plan.
I think Matt Johnston supports that.
All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number four.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rothian.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent, Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, amendment number four to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number five.
Amendment number five, this amendment adjusts. The land use classifications for application number P D R dash three associated with a property located at ten twenty-four Cars Wharf. Road and revises the applicable land use charts and maps contained in Plan Twenty Forty accordingly.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hair, so moved.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you, Ms. Hair, it's your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hair, District Seven, the important piece of this amendment is the map that goes along with it. P D R three, so I'm going to do a terrible job of explaining this, but I'm gonna try. So. There's, yes, there's a map on the second part, okay. This property is a couple of lots already, there's an existing historic house on it, the current land use designation, to my understanding, is already a split. Of maritime and low density residential, it does not currently match up very well with the. Area where the historic house is and, and the other parts of the lot. The application, I think the reason it's a P D R is because the application came in after the original draft plan and so there was some confusion thinking that. The property owners wanted the entire property to be maritime. Upon further discussion with planning and zoning, it's my understanding that, that this makes sense, so it retains the existing. Split designation of maritime and low density residential, but we're simply changing the boundaries. And that will allow the existing historic home to be within that low density residential, and then I believe there's another, this other part over here. On the left-hand side is another, it's its own lot essentially. So I believe planning and zoning is, is comfortable with this as well and I think it makes sense more so than, than any other split. So with that, I ask you to move the amendment.
Mr. Barron, for something specific like this, should I call directly on Ms. Pompa?
For, for this, that, that's fine, I just state that. Appreciate Ms. Hair reaching out to us to discuss it and we have no objection, but Ms. Pompa, if, if you have anything to add.
Thank you, Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning, we also support this, this did come in during the preliminary draft review, so it. Did not have as much review as some of the other private land use applications. And so we did meet with the applicant and we are. We are, we are fine with what is proposed here, we support it.
So anyone have any questions? Okay, I have one, on the map, is it okay for those dash lines to cross, is that intended? It's confusing to me, that's why I'm asking.
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning, could the map go back up on the screen, please? So, Madam Chair. It, it's hard to tell with what's going on here, but the one line. That is curvilinear in nature is essentially going to be removed through this amendment, the original line was curvilinear. But that is part of what's being abandoned here, so if you simply look at. The red, the red dash line and the blue that's adjacent to it, that will be the ultimate line. This is a better line than what was originally drawn.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this right, then. Sort of smack in the middle of the map where you have the little triangle of blue, yep, and just to the left of where the hand is. There's a gap between the blue and the yellow. So is that part?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, that curvilinear line is basically being eliminated. And then the blue shape that's shown and the yellow shape that's shown is what would, what would ultimately become the land use. And I will say that the applicant had, they actually had an engineer work on this drawing, so. It, this does look a little wonky, but we are confident in what was provided to us, that these lines are, are proper and will, you know, will work with the property.
Well, thank you, does anybody else have any questions? I can't see you. There we go, any flags are speaking up either way. Seeing none, oh, Ms. Hair.
This isn't a question or anything, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Pompa and to Ms. Carrier for the, all the questions I asked them on this particular issue, we're coming up with this amendment, so thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number five.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rothian.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey's absent, Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, amendment number five to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please read amendment number six.
Amendment number six. This amendment adds a paragraph describing the sustainable community action plans to the commercial revitalization section. Of the planning for the built environment chapter of Plan Twenty Forty.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
I think Ms. Pickard is seconding on mute.
Again, Allison Pickard.
Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment, so you have the floor.
Thank you, this amendment. Addresses language that can be found in volume one on page sixty-five, the idea for this amendment was discussed. At a previous meeting when I asked about adding the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Area Overlay to the Development Policy Map. After further review, OPZ determined that because this overlay is really an implementation tool. It's not appropriate to be added to the Development Policy Area Map, therefore, this amendment now adds. Language about the overlay to the brown box found on page sixty-five that discusses commercial revitalization areas and sustainable communities.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the administration supports this amendment, Pete Barron with the administration, want to thank Councilwoman Pickard. For the collaborative process to, to get this verbiage correct to make sure we were. Completing her intent, so Mr. Hughes from OPZ, do you want to speak a, a quick minute if I don't see you on my screen?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, thank you, Patrick Hughes with Office of Planning and Zoning. We looked at this and we, we also thought that this was a good amendment, that it helped. Really improve the, the narrative surrounding the, you know, the intent and the. The impact of the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay. And it also provides a little bit more background within the plan on the implementation of the Sustainable Community Action Plans, so. With that, we, we support this.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number six to bill eleven, number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven. This amendment updates the description of the implementation plan for the goals and policies of Plan twenty forty to include a more detailed explanation of how implementation will occur, including the role of the county council, and make several technical edits to clarify certain parts of the implementation plan of Plan twenty forty.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilwoman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Ms. Pickard, keep yourself off mute so you can have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment adds language and clarification in volume one, page seventy-two, if anybody's following along at home. This amendment adds language to the implementation plan and goals and policies of Plan twenty forty to provide more details and clarity on how implementation will occur. Most importantly, it can, it includes clarification regarding the council's role and the definitions of the goals, policies, and strategies that follow in the implementation matrix. So this, I, I worked extensively with OPZ to get this language right and to clarify that strategies listed under all of our goals and policies are still, will still be given full consideration and further study as we go through the implementation plan. I just asked for everybody's support on this. It's, I think, I think where we landed is really good language for, for the plan for the public that's going to be reading it.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I'll just echo particularly the last comment that Councilwoman Pickard made. This document is a very complicated and, and large document, but it is intended for the public to, to see, to, to comb over, to review, to understand. And, and I really do, the administration really does appreciate all the work that Councilwoman Pickard and the staff at OPZ put in to, to bring forward this amendment as, as stated at the work session. And I think just echoing Councilwoman Pickard's comments tonight, they are, this amendment really does help crystallize and, and clarify and, and make a little bit more digestible for the public what this plan is and what this plan isn't. And we support this amendment. We think it's very good. Ms. Pampa, how'd I do? Anything to add?
You did fabulous, Mr. Barron, and I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Pickard for allowing us the opportunity to collaborate with her. I think she had a great vision for what she wanted to see for the implementation language and that this has enhanced the plan. And I do think it's going to make it easier for people reading it as far as what they should expect during implementation. So thank you for the opportunity. We, we definitely support this amendment.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seven.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number seven to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight. This amendment adds the development of a comprehensive resource guide to an implementation strategy for increasing opportunities for business innovation and entrepreneurship.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Councilwoman Pruski. Second.
Can each have half. I mean, we can share. Ms. Pickard, it's your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment actually, I believe, came to the council from our local Chamber of Commerce. If you look at volume one, page one thirty-five, strategy H E two point four point A, the strategy falls under policy H E two point four, which states increase opportunities for business innovation and entrepreneurship with focused initi- My, my, my notes are wrong. Focused initiatives for women and minority-owned businesses. This amendment adds to the strategy to include letter A, the development of a comprehensive resource guide similar to the language already included in H E two point five D. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but happy to answer any questions about it.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. We support this amendment. It's, it's a good goal. We did speak to A, A A E D C and they are supportive.
Any questions or comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number eight to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read amendment number nine.
Amendment number nine. This amendment adds critical corridors along certain areas of Veterans Highway and Hospital Drive to the development policy areas maps in the plan.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Councilwoman Pruski, second.
Ms. Pickard, this is still your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This, the development policy map can be found on pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine of volume one. This amendment adds the commercially-zoned property along Veterans Highway and Hospital Drive to the critical corridor area. The critical corridor is existing developed areas along major roads where opportunities to improve safety and mobility exist. These areas are often form the economic center of a community redevelopment that improves multimodal outcomes and preserves adjacent neighborhoods is encouraged. So there's two sketches that show connecting two larger, two critical corridor at ninety-seven and New Cut Road and ninety-seven and Benfield. And if you know the area, as I do, along Veterans Highway, there's a worn path in the easement along Veterans Highway that connects those two because people walk without sidewalks to and from bus stops to get to, to jobs in those commercial areas. And then if you, the, we've connected, it continues to connect around the older commercial area between Hospital Drive and, and really the hospital along Hospital Drive where there's older commercial entities that with the hospital expanding, I think we should support bringing this into that continuing that critical corridor in that way. It's pretty self-explanatory to me, and I ask that you support this amendment.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. We'll, we support this amendment. To, to be clear, the, the, most of this is already commercially-zoned and largely developed. This is the area that this, the amendment that this is adding, the area from Benfield North sort of like runs along ninety-seven, right to Crane. So if you've been down there, there's, there's, it's all pretty much commercial and all pretty much developed. There's a couple of undeveloped spots, I think, but mostly developed. Mr. Hughes, do you have anything to add on, on why we are supporting this?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. Like, like you said, the area of expansion along Veterans Highway, it really, it does encompass areas that are primarily zoned, I think, C three and C four. A lot of that is on the west side of, of Veterans Highway and it extends from the, the area of Crane Highway to just, just past East West Boulevard. And then the area of expansion along House, Hospital Drive, that area encompasses mostly C two areas, including the Baltimore-Washington Medical Center. So for that reason, this amendment was something that we could support as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number nine.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number nine to bill number eleven twenty-one is adopted.
Okay, and we had amendment number ten was withdrawn. And so since we've adopted amendments to bill number eleven twenty-one this evening, the bill as amended will be heard on April fifth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you all. We'll see you yet again. We'll actually see you before April fifth. You and all of your other friends in GDP world when we have our special GDP work session on April first, which is a Thursday, in the evening beginning at six P M. Madam Secretary, if you agree, I think we can get through bill number fourteen twenty-one before our break.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we can do it too.
Please go ahead and read the title of that bill as amended.
Bill number fourteen twenty-one, Inordinance Concerning Zoning and Construction Code, Setbacks and Permits for Certain Accessory Structures.
Okay, this is Mr. Pruski's bill. Ms. Pickard's a co-sponsor. Mr. Pick, I mean, the Mr. Pickard. Mr. Pruski, you have the floor first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Pruski here. For those of you that don't know, this bill had the one amendment last time to conform with the code for commercial. Essentially, this bill is finding out the tune for construction property maintenance codes in regards to what you would need for permit under a hundred and fifty square feet. And as I mentioned earlier, the irregular lots for all five, it just makes a small adjustment. I ask for everybody's support. We've talked about this several times and appreciate everybody doing it. And thank the administration, Greg Africa and DPW, Chris Steps, who are working hard, and all the staff. I really appreciate working with me on this. Thank you.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron. Joining me is Ms. Miller from OPZ, Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law, Mr. Wasim, and Mr. Africa from IMP. As, as the sponsor noted, we've discussed this bill a couple of times now. It's, it's a good bill. Appreciate everybody working together to, to fine-tune it to where it is now. Administration is comfortable and supports the bill tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? All right, we will now open the public hearing on bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony for bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on bill number fourteen twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended.
Bill number fourteen twenty-one, Inordinance Concerning Zoning and Construction Code, Setbacks and Permits for Certain Accessory Structures.
Is there any further discussion? I'd just like to know how many constituents reached out to everyone saying, please pass this bill. I've already bought my shed. I can hardly wait. Those are the kinds of comments I'm getting. Okay, well, seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill number fourteen twenty-one as amended is passed.
Thank you. I guess we'll get into bill number seventeen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bill.
Bill number seventeen twenty-one, Inordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service Job Classifications Position Control Fire Department.
This is an administration bill, Mr. Barron? You have five minutes at the most.
We'll be quick, Madam Chair. Thank you. Barron with the administration, joining me is Deputy Chief Dinkle from Personnel, Ms. Podowski, Ms. Atkinson, and Ms. Collins from Budget, Mr. Teru, and from Law, Ms. Blair Klassmeyer. This bill basically adds, changes, don't let me say that, of fire communications operator to fire communicator operator one, creates two new positions, a fire communications operator two and a fire communications operator three to establish a proficiency series. There will be an amendment to correct the number. It's, it decreases twenty-eight, not twenty-nine fire communications operator positions and increases twenty-eight fire communications one plus adding the ones noted above. So with that, please move the bill after it's properly amended.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fether, District Five. So I just had a question on the number of positions overall. So if we're at twenty-eight, twenty-nine for level one and say someone does want it to advance their career, they meet all the requirements to go to level two or three, they move to level two or level three, is the intention to then fill that level one position so that we've actually increased by one position overall? Or are we staying at twenty-eight, twenty-nine and just leaving room for improvement and growth?
Sure. For the record, Deputy Chief Frost Dinkle. So the intention is the F C O two position will be a proficiency advancement. So in theory, all twenty-eight over time could achieve that. That would not increase staffing by twenty-eight folks. It just gives them a, a movement within the F C O proficient or steps up. The F C O three position, on the other hand, we're going to be requesting six additional positions over time to, to create those supervisory positions that these F C O twos now will be built upon the F C O one-two progression that they could promote, competitively promote into the F C O three position as a supervisory position, which would free up some of our fire department lieutenants who are currently filling those supervisory positions. And those lieutenants could go back to providing service in the field.
Great, thank you. Any other questions right now? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number seventeen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony for bill number seventeen twenty-one.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Therefore, the public hearing on bill number seventeen twenty-one is now closed. And we have an amendment. What should we do? Please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one.
Watching my clock, I'm sorry.
This amendment correctly identifies the number of fire communications operator positions approved as a part of the F Y twenty-one budget that are being decreased and the number of corresponding fire communications operator one positions being increased.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
And a second?
Second, Councilwoman Pruski.
Mr. Barron.
As, thank you, Pete Barron with the administration, as, as I mentioned in, in my rush- As, as I mentioned in, in my rush remarks, the original bill incorrectly noted the number of positions. This is the corrective amendment. Please pass.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volki is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One to Bill Number 1721 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 1721 as amended will be heard on April 5th, 2021. May I have a motion to recess for 10 minutes?
Still moved. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We will return at 7:45. Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Madam Legislative Counsel, Linda Schuet.
Present.
Madam Auditor, Susan Smith.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have six council members. Mr. Volki is absent. We have our Legislative Counsel and our County Auditor.
Wonderful, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1821.
Bill Number 1821, An Ordnance Concerning Budget Departmental Personnel Summary Reclassification of Positions.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from Budget is Mr. Teru from Personnel, Ms. Podowski, and Ms. Collins. Not sure if Ms. Atkinson is going to still be with us. Yep, there she is. And Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, Bill 18-21 comes out of discussions and issues that were raised during the FY21 budget process pertaining to the reclassification of occupied positions through the budget. This legislation will codify, this is permissible. The, this change does not reclassify an employee, however, reclassifies the position. Employees who are currently in a position that is reclassified through the budget will serve as an underfill role. Reclassifications of filled positions will be notated in the budget. All the reclassifications of employees must still follow the budget, or follow the process, excuse me, established in the Human Relations Manual. This proposed change allows for additional transparency and increased efficiency in relation to the administration's vision for each budget year. As, as I mentioned, a lot of discussions were occurring during the FY21 budget process between the Office of Budget, the County Auditor, Office of Personnel, and Law. 1821 is the, the child of those discussions, and, and we think it's a good bill and hope you will move it today. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1821. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for Bill Number 1821.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on Bill Number 1821 is now closed. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1821.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Travolki is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 1821 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1921.
Bill Number 1921, An Ordnance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines Crimes Littering.
Thank you. Mr. Volki is the lead sponsor on this bill. Ms. Fiedler is a co-sponsor. Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor. Thank you. Mr. Volkey is the lead sponsor on this bill. Ms. Fiedler is a co-sponsor. Ms. Fiedler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Bill nineteen twenty-one, we discussed during the work session, it defines littering, prohibits littering and establishes a civil fine. In practice, it would require that an officer of the Anarondale County Police Department or a witness. Sees a purposeful offense, meaning not accidental. And are, are willing to either take action. From County Police Department, or the witness is willing to testify if necessary. This would not hold a business responsible for any litter on their property. Or a homeowner responsible if litter ended up on their property. And I ask for my colleagues' support this evening and am happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Barron, would the administration like to respond?
Happy to. Pete Barron with the administration, joining me is Major Passman from our Police Department. And Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. Appreciate the sponsors working with us to, to craft this bill. Administration supports.
Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number nineteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for Bill number nineteen twenty-one.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public, public hearing on Bill number nineteen twenty-one is now closed. Is there any further discussion? I have a question if no one else does. I think this is probably for Major Passman. As of, as of this time, do you envision needing any additional resources to be able to enforce this bill of the passes?
Agent Ross, passing with the Police Department. No, currently, there is a traffic article, there is a traffic article that. Most officers will use when they see things that are occurring on public roads. Most of the time trash is thrown from vehicles. This will just add another tool to, to help on those pieces of property that aren't adjacent to roads. But I don't, I don't see a large increase of our citations because of this.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number nineteen twenty-one.
Madam Chair, I think I need to read the title one more time. That may have, we may have accidentally missed that part. So how about if I read the title one more time?
I guess you can.
Bill number nineteen twenty-one, an ordinance concerning crimes, civil offenses and fines, crimes, littering.
Okay, now, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Can I vote twice for Mr. Volkey also? Aye, aye.
I think we're only allowed to give you one vote, I'm so sorry. That makes it six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill number nineteen twenty-one is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please read the title of Bill number twenty twenty-one.
Bill number twenty twenty-one, an ordinance concerning floodplain management, erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. Subdivision and development, forest conservation.
This is Ms. Rodvian's bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So this bill is basically intended to close a loophole that we have discovered from the Forest Conservation Act. That we passed late in twenty nineteen. Basically, the Forest Conservation Act that we passed comes into play once a developer submits a development application. However, if there is not an application on the books yet, the requirements of the Forest Conservation Act do not apply. We've had a couple incidents around the county where clearing of trees took place. And unfortunately, the, the harsher penalties of the Forest Conservation Act. Were not, were not able to be enforced and instead just the much smaller fine for grading without a permit. So this basically, this bill basically closes that loophole to make. We have, we have a small little exception carved out in the amendment that we'll talk about in a little bit, but basically. Even if there is not a development application on the books, a person clearing. Trees without the proper permit would. Would be subject to the larger fine. And I'm happy to answer any questions and.
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. Would the administration like to respond?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Mr. Johnston. Also from the County Execs Office, from IMP, we have Mr. Africa and Mr. Badami. From TPW, Mr. Michelson and from Law, Ms. Kenny. As, as first let me state, I appreciate the sponsor of the bill, working with the administration to craft this. I think we'll see an amendment later that will, will address a, a concern to make sure that this is precisely targeted. So it, it, just as a reminder, a little more than a year ago, this council voted unanimously to. Forest conservation ordinance to protect the county's forests. This council also voted to amend the bill to include a penalty. For, to increase the penalty for those that violated the ordinance. So what has happened, and then there's been a couple of, of pretty high-profile cases, including one in. In the sponsors district where someone was able to use a loophole. It, that allowed the forest to be cleared, but avoid the requirements of the Forest Conservation Ordinance. And, and this violation results in, in a pretty low fine, which was, I don't think. The administration's intent when we, we brought forward the Forest Conservation Bill, nor this council's intent. When, when you passed it unanimously. So with, with that. This bill closes that loophole without, and, and the amendment that will be coming forward will make sure it's clear that it won't add a regulatory burden. For, for a, a regular resident. But this bill makes it the clearing of trees in a forest with a priority retention area. Subject to the, the fine that is included in the Forest Conservation. Ordinance of four hundred fifty dollars per square foot up to ten grand. So with that. Mr. Johnston, who knows this stuff way better than I ever could dream to. Or anybody on the, on the screen from the administration. If I missed anything, please feel free to speak up. But we will ask you to support the amendments coming and then eventually this bill. I think it's a good bill.
Thank, thanks, Mr. Barron. And just for the record, Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. Just wanted to thank the sponsor, Councilwoman Rodvian, for not only working with us. Asking us how to get this done and drafting the legislation, but also drafting amendments to, as Mr. Barron said. Not burden individual homeowners who have to or seek to take down a few trees in their yard as all of us have. Had that thought in our minds to put in a playplace or other, or have to remove a hazardous tree that's gonna fall in our house. So that's not what this bill is about. And I'm just happy to take any questions from the council as we work through this. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none at the moment, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number twenty twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received two submissions of testimony for Bill number twenty twenty-one. The entire council received copies and these have been posted to the website and added to the bill file.
And we do have one individual signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We have Benjamin Alexandro.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Name and address for the record, please.
Ben Alexandro, and I'm the Water Program Director for the Maryland League of Conservation Voters, and we're located right behind the County Council Chambers on Thirty West Street.
Okay, you can go ahead. Your two minutes is running.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Well, we represent over three thousand members in Anarondale County and many more voters across the state. And forest conservation in, in the county is a major priority for Maryland LCV. So thank you all for, for really dedicating your time and energy and grappling with this important issue in the council. I mean, in the county, and I especially wanna thank Councilmember Rodvian for your leadership in bringing this forward. As well as those beneficial amendments to make sure that we focus on those large-scale developments. Industry as opposed to the individual property owners. So in, in two thousand and nineteen, we're very involved in those sweeping efforts around the state. And specifically in Anarondale County to, to improve that Forest Conservation Act. And while it was a positive step in the right direction, the county still continues to lose forests and other counties since then have gone far beyond this. But it's still a good step. But we're all very surprised to find that there is this loophole that allows major developments, developers to completely ignore. The good work that was being done. And this loophole really needs to be closed. Cause currently, a developer can remove a forest first and then submit their development plan. And so while it's discouraged, the current penalty basically equates, equates to a slap on the wrist and will not compel these large developers to comply with that two thousand and nineteen law that was passed unanimously. So the developer should not be able to remove trees before the application is sent to the county without those severe penalties. And this bill will, uh, targets that loophole to ensure the developers follow that act as was intended. And, you know, we, we, the bill really requires that the standard grading plan and replanting for off, of three times, the area cleared illegally. Additionally, we support increasing that fine to bring the penalty in line with those that violate the Forest Conservation Law passed in two thousand and nineteen as intended. So Anarondale County can really take pride in passing that bill back in two thousand and nineteen. However, the intent was never to allow these developers. To be able to ignore it by simply not submitting the required paperwork. In order to.
Sir Alexandro, your, your time is expired.
Okay, please vote yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill number twenty twenty-one is now closed. Uh, we do have amendments, Madam Secretary. When you're ready, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes certain types of plants, shrubs or trees from the list of areas that require approval for clearing.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Second, Councilwoman Pruski.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Actually, it's not. I don't have in my notes. Ms. Rodvian, is this your amendment or the administration's amendment?
It's my amendment.
Okay, well, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So this amendment really is an attempt to simplify and make sure, again, we're focusing. On the parties and the type of priority forests that we really want to protect. So if you happen to have the bill in front of you, it takes out Roman numerals, numbers two, three and four. Under Section sixteen dash three dash two oh one. Subsection A four. And so it really just limits it to priority forest. So. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure Mr. Johnson could as well.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the administration supports. And, and for all these technical questions, as always, Mr. Johnston, and you have anything to add or anybody on the team?
Nothing to add. Councilwoman Rodvian described it very well. What is left intact in the bill after this amendment? Are those priority forests that were given su- such a high priority by this council unanimously in the Forest Conservation Act?
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. When you're ready, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment makes. Clearing three trees or more a violation if the canopy coverage of the trees is twenty-five hundred square feet or more.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Councilwoman Pruski, second.
Ms. Rodvian, this is definitely your amendment. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So this, um, the original bill had a requirement of. More than three, uh, excuse me, the lesser of three trees or sixteen hundred square feet. We did, um, actually, and some of our constituents did a little poking at the bill and discovered that. We may have trees with a larger canopy than sixteen hundred square feet. So we sort of flipped the, the requirement on its head again in intent to. Make sure that the ordinary homeowners were not scooped up into the requirements of this bill. So this amendment basically says up to three trees. And. Up to three trees if the canopy coverage is twenty-five hundred square feet or more. So this really gives a little bit more leeway for the ordinary homeowner, so they can have three trees and up to twenty-five hundred square feet. Which is a huge tree. And even then, if it's only one tree, they still have to have three.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Administration supports. As, as the sponsor noted. This is an intent to clarify that this bill is, is really going after a specific problem and not going after a, a regular homeowner. Mr. Johnston, turning to you. If you got anything to add.
I think you both hit the nail on the head. Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. Only thing that I would add is. Trees do vary in size by state definition. The minimum for a forest is about four hundred square feet. But we realized after speaking with constituents that it could get much larger. So that's the purpose of this amendment. And wanna thank Councilwoman again for working with us on it.
And I actually, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, could I be recognized, please?
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. I once again wanna thank from the Office of Law, Kelly Kenny, who was instrumental in creating these amendments.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on Amendment Number Two? Okay, uh, well, I'm going to offer a comment. I, I can't support this amendment. I just think it opens things up for the, for our homeowners a little too big. And I, I think it's sort of counter to the overall policy that we want, especially when you're talking about huge established trees. So I just, I just don't agree, but you know, no offense or anything, just letting you know. Okay, so seeing nobody else having comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Five in the affirmative. One absent, one in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. When you're ready, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment requires that the factors to consider in assessing fines for critical area violations listed in Section sixteen five one oh five B four. Shall be considered in determining the amount of fines assessed for forest clearing violations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Councilwoman Pruski, second.
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. Again, your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So, um, even if somehow the homeowner were still caught up. But again, we tried to create the first two amendments to make sure that they weren't caught up. But even if they were, Amendment Number Three basically gives the discretion. In terms of assessing a fine. So there are certain things that could be considered. When assessing the fine to the person who was responsible for clearing the trees in violation. And those things are, I'll just read them since they're sort of referenced, they reference a different section of the code. They are the gravity of the violation, any willfulness or negligence involved in the violation. The environmental impact of the violation and the cost of restoration and mitigation, including. The environmental impact of the violation and the cost of restoration and mitigation, including any costs incurred by the state or county. So even there, we're trying to create a little bit of um, a little bit of space to distinguish between um, you know, the homeowner who's doing, you know. Doing something on their property to, you know, accommodate their their home, their yard, their deck. I, you know, could be lots of different things um versus a um a developer who's simply um clearing trees. In anticipation of, but not actually filed a development application.
Mr. Barron.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron. We support. Um, I'm gonna ask Matt Johnston again uh to to summarize this one.
Sure. Thank you for the record, Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director. Uh, for the third time, thank you, councilwoman, for working with us on this amendment. I will tell you, the the Critical Area Commission was on to something here with this discretionary language on how you set punitive damages or fines. Um, really smart language here, and um it really reflects the kind of approach that Greg Africa's Department of Inspections and Permits. And of the Office of Law take whenever they're assessing fines anyway. So this codifies kind of our discretionary approach in law here. And we're very supportive of the of this language and discretionary approach in general. Thanks.
Any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
And Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number three is adopted.
Thank you, and thank you to the panel. Bill number twenty twenty one, as amended, will be heard on April fifth, twenty twenty one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty one twenty one.
Bill number twenty one twenty one, in ordinance concerning zoning, landscaping, and tree contracting with accessory recycling of logs into firewood.
This is Ms. Hare's bill. Ms. Hare, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Uh, we discussed this at the work session, so I'll I'll try and keep this brief. But uh essentially, under existing county code, um, a landscaping and tree contracting business can currently go to someone's property and and cut or trim or prune a tree. Um, and it's a special exception in in R A district already, but they cannot then take the tree back to their property. And cut it up to be firewood to sell either back to the homeowner or et cetera. Um, instead, they have to truck the 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 tree trunk up to um. The northern part of the county where it can be recycled into logs to be sold for firewood uh at a greater expense, or they send it to the landfill. Um, and this is sort of highly inefficient and doesn't seem to be very environmentally sound. And this was raised to me by um by a constituent who would like very much to be able to just take the trees and chop them up to firewood to be able to give back to the homeowner or otherwise sell. Um, so I talked to planning and zoning about it, and we came up with a variety of conditions under which it might be appropriate to have. Um, these logs be recycled, also as a special exception in the R A district. Um, so for example, it has to be on a lot of five acres. They have to contain the storage area for these logs. It has to be a specific distance, two hundred feet from any neighboring lot line, both for for visual and potential sound. Effects. There's a decibel, uh, a maximum decibel limit in here, so we're making sure we're not disturbing neighbors. So I I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have a small amendment this evening. Wait, there's a reference missing from the bill that um. Madam Legislative Council tells me we need to have in here, so there will be a a brief amendment coming this evening. Um, but other than that, I I would ask for your support on the bill.
Thank you, Ms. Hare. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Pete Barron with the administration. Uh, as we discussed at the work session, um. Uh, a fair amount of time went into to crafting this. I want to thank the sponsor and the folks in um. Uh, law and and O P Z uh for getting it right, as well as Legislative Council, Ms. Schewitt. I think we got a good bill here. Um, and uh we are supportive.
Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Rodvian.
Um, Madam Chair, thank you. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. This is not exactly a question. It's just a comment. I really want to thank the sponsor for identifying that this is an issue. And um coming up with a solution that seems so logical. Um, I'm glad that this will now, well, hopefully, will become part of our code.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Thanks, Councilwoman Rodvian. I also wanted to, I did have a question from a constituent, so I wanted to just um ask a question to Planning and Zoning for the public. Um, in terms of this decibel level. Uh, we we came up with a distance of two hundred feet and a decibel level of about. I think it's fifty five is the average and not to exceed sixty decibels at the neighboring lot line. And the the constituent had asked me sort of how is that enforced? And we had talked about this, so I just wanted to confirm with you that. Essentially, there is this decibel meter that can be used at the lot line um to measure uh the decibel level during the operating hours. And that um, I I actually looked it up. It looks like you can even use your phone to do it. There's a free app you can go get. Um, but so I just wanted to confirm that that is something that we otherwise already have the capability to do in the county.
Hi, I'm Lynn Miller with Planning and Zoning. Um, that's correct, councilwoman here. On this uh noise level of fifty five D L. Is something that we've used elsewhere in the code when we have um uses where we're concerned about them generating an excessive amount of noise. That might be um troublesome to neighboring residential properties. So it's a standard that's used elsewhere and. Um, sound engineering um guidance uh offers a whole range of noise levels that you can strive to meet. And this is, I think, commonly used to avoid annoyance uh to outdoor areas.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any further questions or comments at this time? Okay, seeing none at this moment, we will now open the public hearing on bill number twenty one twenty one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received four submissions of testimony for bill number twenty one twenty one. The entire council received copies, and these have been posted to the website and added to the bill file.
Thank you. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on bill number twenty one twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty one twenty one.
Bill number twenty one twenty one, in ordinance concerning zoning, landscaping, and tree contracting with accessory recycling of logs into firewood.
I'm told there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment amends one of the requirements for landscaping and tree contracting with accessory recycling of logs into firewood. As a special exception used to require compliance with the hours of operation for the use landscaping and tree contracting.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Second Councilmember.
Thank you both. Um, is there any discussion? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Uh, this does exactly what Madam Secretary said. The the um landscaping and tree contracting business has hours of operations. And the reference to include those hours of operations to also be applicable to this bill just needs to be added. That's it.
Um, I guess a question perhaps for Ms. Schewitt. Is is this a technical amendment?
No, unfortunately, it is not.
Rats. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or comments on amendment number one? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is still absent. Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
And Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number one to bill number twenty one twenty one is adopted.
Okay, bill number twenty one twenty one, as amended, will be heard on April fifth, twenty twenty one. And that was the last bill we have for tonight, so we will plow into resolutions. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number seventeen twenty one.
Resolution number seventeen twenty one, resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to L three Technologies Inc.
Mr. Barron, this is an administration requested resolution. You have the floor.
Indeed it is. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining uh us this evening is our Economic Development Director, Mr. Burge. Uh, Ms. Horta and Mr. McQuillum from, also from A A E D C and from law. I believe we have Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer on this bill. Um, so we've done a couple of these M E D A F resolutions. These are the uh Maryland Economic Development Assistance uh Fund Grants. Um, L three Harris is requesting uh three hundred thousand dollars in M E D A funding. Uh, there is a ten percent match requirement that A A E D C uh would need to do. What's ten percent or about thirty thousand? Um, L three Harris uh plans to renovate a facility in District Four, in Council District Four. And lease a new facility in Council District One. Uh, the total investment from the company is about three million dollars. It will add ninety new permanent full-time employees for a total of two hundred and nineteen full-time permanent employees. Uh, by December of twenty twenty three. Um, as as a reminder, uh, the the ten percent match is is required. Uh, by uh the Maryland Department of Commerce. Uh, historically, uh, economic development meets that ten percent requirement. In the form of a workforce training agreement. Um, with that, uh, Mr. Burge, you or anybody of your on your team have anything to add? And we asking you move the resolution tonight.
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Barron. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, members of the council, again, Ben Burge. With uh Anarondale Economic Development Corporation. Um, Pete basically read my notes. I have nothing to add. The only slight context I would add is that the ninety positions he referenced is a seventy, seven zero percent increase in employment. So that's a pretty substantial growth in the workforce um coming here to the county. Um, so um. Other than that, unless um Ms. Horta or Mr. McQuillum have anything to add, um. That that's about all the information we have for you and and hope you support the resolution.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on resolution number seventeen twenty one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any testimony from members of the public on resolution number seventeen twenty one.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this resolution. The public hearing on resolution number seventeen twenty one is now closed. Is there any further discussion? Um, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number seventeen twenty one.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I need to read the title in one last time.
Okay, well, my script. We're gonna have to work on my script.
I'm sorry, it's missing, I think, but.
That's okay.
One last time.
Go ahead.
Resolution, resolution number seventeen twenty one, resolution endorsing financial assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund to L three Technologies Inc.
Thank you. Please call the roll in the resolution.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Strupuski.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution number seventeen twenty one is adopted.
Thank you all on the panel. We will move on. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number eighteen twenty one.
Resolution number eighteen twenty one, resolution supporting the goals and recommendations of the joint initiative to eliminate the opportunity gap committee.
Ms. Pickard is the lead sponsor on this resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we had an opportunity to hear from the um. Joint Initiative Committee eliminating the opportunity gap um a while back. And we, they, they specifically asked this council uh for a resolution of support of the findings and the recommendations in that resolution. And this resolution is just that. Um, I believe the m- members that were here to present um the report. Are joining us if they have anything to add. Um, but I hope everyone will support our resolution tonight.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Pete Barron with the administration. Uh, joining me from the joint initiative to eliminate the opportunity gap committee. Um, I had it to have it written down. It's a mouthful. Um, is uh Ms. Purcell and uh Ms. Brown. Um, Ms. Purcell presented to the council at the work session. I also have Ms. Blair Klausmeyer here from the Office of Law. Um, a- at that work session, and and I encourage anybody who uh wasn't uh in the public, who wasn't able to see the February ninth work session. I think we had everybody from the council here for it. Um, I, their, their presentation was pretty impressive. I I encourage you all to to go check it out. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Purcell just to say a a word or two. Uh, but we strongly support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Uh, council, thank you very much for uh for sponsoring this resolution. Um. The only update since our presentation at the work session in February is that we're gonna be sending our draft executive order. Which is gonna create the commission that was mentioned in priority recommendation number one to the Office of Law tomorrow. And uh we're very proud to report that that puts us about uh one month ahead of the schedule that we had presented to you back in February. So um that's the only update I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Pickard.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to add uh the the original. Convening of this joint initiative stems from an understanding that um. We can't rely on our school system to solve all of our community issues. And um as a former school board member, I wholeheartedly agree with that. While the school system um is an incredible partner in educating our. Our youth in the county. We have lots of stakeholders that should be um also engaged in. Creating a better quality of life for all the children in our community. So that's, I'm hoping to see that's what this work is going to be doing as we move forward as a county. And I feel like it's important work, and I'm very grateful that the folks that have spent so much time engaged up to this point. Um, and I look forward to seeing the work continue. So I'll just add that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on resolution number eighteen twenty one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one submission of testimony for resolution number eighteen twenty one. The entire council received a copy. It's been posted to the website and added to the legislative file.
Thank you. We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on the resolution tonight. The public hearing on resolution number eighteen twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number eighteen twenty one.
Resolution number eighteen twenty one, resolution supporting the goals and recommendations of the joint initiative to eliminate the opportunity gaps, gap committee.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number eighteen twenty one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
And Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution number eighteen twenty one is adopted.
Thank you to the panel. We'll move on to. Thank you to the panel, we'll move on to resolution number nineteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of that resolution.
Resolution number nineteen twenty-one, resolution supporting the development of a statewide comprehensive plan to divert food residuals from landfills.
Mister Pruski is the lead sponsor on this resolution, you have the floor.
Thank you Madam Chair, uh, I wanna thank everybody for the patience, the last resolution for the evening. Um, I just wanna highlight some points, and again, I wanna state that, um, this is obviously, uh, situation where we really need to take action, um, and, and I wanna go through some of the facts, so it kinda lays out why I think we need to take action. Uh, I did take a tour, uh, of the Millersville landfill about three weeks ago to actually see, uh, organic recycling in action. So if you ever drive up Millersville, you know, you go through the gate, they check you in, if you turn to the left, there is a green bin that has obviously organic waste, uh, that's brought in, people can just come drop it off. The interesting piece though, it's not processed here, it's processed in Prince George's County. So, again, we're taking our organic waste that people voluntarily bring and bring it to Prince George's. And let me just read some of the things and, and I'll explain further why I think this is important. First of all, eighteen percent of all solid waste in landfills across Maryland, not just Antirundel County, are made up of food residuals. Seventeen percent of all food waste Maryland has com- composted, again, small amount. There are only five currently facilities across Maryland that are permitted to do large amounts of food waste composting. And these, uh, facilities are only capable of crossing less than twelve percent. Currently, people in Maryland have been doing it on their own, I know if you generally live in a rural area, you garden, you have a compost pile, you can do it right in your backyard, but a lot of people just throw, uh, a lot of their things out to the curb. Uh, a consideration of a county-run organic recycling program, uh, would incentivize more composting by making it easier for people to participate, because if we had a curbside pickup, that is a model that you can look at. For those of you, uh, unfortunately, nobody else, um, maybe remembers this, this was the prior, my prior tenure on the council, we passed a composting bill, I believe it's in Ms. Harris' district, of a facility that actually is a public-private partnership. Where restaurants from Annapolis bring in or- organics, recycle what's there, and then resell the product, uh, obviously for gardening and, and other aspects. If you ever get a chance to go to landfill, since we were talking about trees today, they actually recycle your Christmas trees and other things for scots and leaf grow and other products, again, public-private partnership, things that are already occurring. Composting has tremendous environmental benefits such as enriching soil, obviously for chemical fertilizers, and also lowers the methane emissions from our landfills. Obviously, we do use the methane for electricity, but we can only use so much. The state of Maryland obviously has additional resources to create regional programs that not would just benefit Antirundel County, but our neighboring jurisdictions. And I wanna finish with this, cuz I think this is the most important piece. For those of you that noticed with the pandemic, what is occurring? More people are staying home, and if you talk about our current landfill situation, go to the curb right now and see much trash is being put out because of people tailworking in a change of behavior. When our next RFP comes out, from when we have to put out bids for the amount of trash that's going to occur, we need to consider the taxpayer, because remember, recycling help extend our landfill operations, but that only goes so far, and in addition, when we look at these RFPs, maybe we consider obviously such thing as composting the facilities. So, in my opinion, this is a statement that we should look at this at a state and regional level. Antirundel certainly has taken the lead on recycling efforts initially, but in talking, obviously with DPW, Mister Holt House and everyone, this regional approach is the way to go, and I think it's worth a discussion. Uh, again, when we go through this budget, you start seeing RFPs with trash and understanding that there's a cost to taxpayers, and we can also talk, talk about doing something environmentally friendly, I think it, again, it's worth, uh, making a statement on this, and that's where it's at, thank you so much for your consideration.
The administration like to chime in?
Sure, thank you Madam Chair, Pete Baron with the administration, joining me is, uh, our Environmental Policy Director, Matt Johnston, from DPW, our Director Chris Phipps, and from law, uh, Lori Blair Klausmeyer, our Supervising County Attorney, did I get that right? No, no, sorry.
Deputy County Attorney.
Deputy County Attorney, I'm sorry, did not mean to demote you, uh, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. So, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the sponsor of the bill for, uh, uh, working, uh, with the administration to, to fine-tune this a little bit, uh, it's a really good, uh, resolution. Uh, a couple of, um, sort of things to, to note, and, and the sponsor really did mention a lot of this. This is a difficult problem to solve, uh, the abundance of food residuals in our waste stream. Uh, it, it makes up a significant percentage of the waste collected, it takes up valuable landfill real estate, uh, and it does generate methane gas that must be captured to avoid increasing greenhouse gas emissions that impact the climate. So there's, there's state regulations to consider, there's all sorts of stuff that we need to be, um, looking at and, and, you know, the, I think it was mentioned, the county does, uh, run, uh, a very successful but small-scale food scraps, scraps program, and, uh, it's at our recycling centers, you can learn more at it at our website. So the, the regulatory and cost hurdles, um, make it unlikely that the county will be able to build and finance a large facility in the future, and it's unlikely that a large private market for food scraps will develop. So this resolution really recommends the, the, the right next step, which is to offer, uh, residents and businesses more options, a, a comprehensive statewide plan, uh, to divert food, uh, resid- residuals from landfills, and, and the administration supports drafting such a plan, and, and thanks the councilman, uh, the councilman for, for bringing this forward. I am by no means an expert, so, uh, Mister Phipps or Mister Johnson, anything to add?
I have a question. I know that in, making compost is a good goal in and of itself for its usefulness and recycling. I'm curious whether, uh, do we think or do we know whether this has happened in other places where they've added composting facilities, has the quality of their recycling stream improved due to there being less food contamination?
Mister Johnston, sounds like.
That, that would be a detailed question for DPW if they've looked into other places. What I will say about the first half of your question, the facts is, you're absolutely right. That is one of the reasons why the administration was, was so excited to work with the councilmen, and thank you councilmen for bringing this resolution forward, because we see in other states that a private market has stepped forward, the private marketplace has stepped forward and done this successfully, when the regulations and are, are such that facilities can be built. But to your more, uh, specific question about did it, uh, make the waste stream better, I'd have to turn to Chris Phipps and DPW.
Chris Phipps, uh, Director of Public Works, um, we haven't looked at that, um, you know, if you really think about it, theoretically, you shouldn't be putting food scraps in the recycling containers anyway, so theoretically, it, it shouldn't make a difference uh, on contamination rates, practically speaking, in application, we, we don't know, because we haven't really, we haven't evaluated that. And, uh, you know, they're, they're really, to my knowledge, there are, n- none of the counties are on a mass scale doing any kind of curbside, um, organics or food scrap recycling. There are private entrepreneurs that will, that you can sign up, um, uh, you know, privately, and they will come around and pick up a five-gallon bucket, you know, every so often, um, and service it that way. But on a mass scale, uh, of the order of the magnitude, um, Councilman Pruski was talking about, we, we haven't gotten into that, that arena at this point. So, i- it, but to answer your question, um, we don't have any data to show whether it would change or has changed the contamination rate of single-stream recycling.
I appreciate it, uh, anybody else with? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, um, I'm excited to support this resolution this evening, but while we have Mister Phipps here, I was recently on the Department of Public Works, Works Waste Management page, and there is a plethora of information out there. So I encourage everyone watching at home to check it out, I was wondering, since we're talking about, um, composting, if you could just briefly discuss the curbs for curbside, uh, folks in the county, the accessibility for the compost bins through the county. I know I, uh, will be reaching out and hope to be yielding a more successful vegetable garden with, uh, the soil that we create from it. So I was very excited about that and hope you could touch on it very briefly.
Yes, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, um, if you contact our customer relations office, you can get a, um, backyard composting kit, which is basically the bin, the container. Um, and we do provide that through our Waste Management Services, if you're a subscriber to our, our services. So if you're a, you know, a curbside collection, um, customer, then you have that, you have that option.
Thank you. Well, that's good to know, Mister Pruski.
Thank you Madam Chair, and I'm gonna follow up with, uh, Ms. Fiedler's line of questioning. When I did visit the organic recycling unit, um, technically, you're not supposed to throw your greasy pizza boxes in with the recycling. They can go in with this organic recycling though, as it gets mixed in with paper and it actually helps to, um, kind of, uh, compost the food and other things. So I did wanna make that public service announcement, there's a lot of things you learn when you go, and you also get a chance to go to the landfill to see the methane gas, uh, generator, electrical, uh, piece, it's just amazing. Again, a lot of great things going on, and I thought I'd share that as a public service announcement, but thank you Ms. Fiedler for bringing up, um, how we can do our own part, appreciate it.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you Madam Chair, and I also wanna thank the sponsor for bringing this, this issue forward. I look forward to my tour next Wednesday with, uh, my eighth grader to tour the landfill, uh, in lieu of, uh, a missing science fair this year. We'll, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, um, environmental science together. He says he's excited about going, so we'll see what happens when actually two o'clock Wednesday comes around. But, um, I'm a frequent flyer of the Millersville landfill, so, um, it's always very therapeutic to go. I'm not growing a garden though, but, um, so thanks, uh, Mister Pruski for bringing this issue forward, and I look forward to learning more about it.
Okay, I think we can now open the public hearing on resolution number nineteen twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony for resolution number nineteen twenty-one.
We do not have any individuals signed up to speak on this resolution, the public hearing on resolution number nineteen twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number nineteen twenty-one.
Resolution number nineteen twenty-one, a resolution supporting the development of a statewide comprehensive plan to divert food residuals from landfills.
Is there any further discussion? Do we need to digest or break down any other ideas into their organic components? Seeing, seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number nineteen twenty-one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mister Volkey still absent, Mister Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, resolution number nineteen twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you Madam Secretary, I'm sorry to inform you Mister Pruski, we have three more resolutions to go. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number twenty twenty-one.
One moment please, I'm sorry, that one was our, our last minute ad. Resolution number twenty twenty-one, resolution confirming the reappointment of an Antirundel County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
This is an administration resolution, Mister Baron.
Thank you Madam Chair, um, I did not think to open my notes before then, it's a great resolution, please, uh, move it. Let me find it real quick. It, um, the, it's a reappointment, I do know, I do recall that. Hold on one second, sorry. Have my notes ready?
Take your time.
Maybe we can put the resolution on the screen so I can see it, cuz I'm not finding it. If Ms. Schultz is here, I know she can.
We can bring it up, just give us one, if, uh, Ms. Schultz, I can bring it up too.
All right, so this is the, um, resolution, uh, reappointing Ms. Eunice, uh, to, uh, the Spending Affordability Committee. The Eunice is a resident of District Two, the, the, um, uh, term expired. They've, uh, served well, we would like to reappoint.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't see any flags, I don't hear anybody calling me. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number twenty twenty-one.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, it's Mister Eunice.
Resolution confirming the reappointment of an Antirundel County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? We thank him for his willingness to serve. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number twenty twenty-one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mister Volkey is still absent, Mister Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, resolution number twenty twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number twenty-one twenty-one.
Resolution number twenty-one twenty-one, resolution expressing the need for land located in Severn Maryland and owned by the Antirundel County Board of Education for the Severn Intergenerational Center.
Thank you, um, this, I sponsored this resolution, um, both as chair and as the representative of the district where this project will be built. We've been working for quite a long time to make this land transfer happen, and as soon as it does, I believe Ms. Koch will, will say, you know, give the green light to whoever's next in the, in the planning process. I'm not quite sure whether it's we break ground, um, or which part that we're, we're getting on to at this point. But either way, this is a necessary step, and we're, um, this resolution is a necessary step. We're required under state law, I believe, to, um, to pass this resolution within thirty days of the notice that we received from the Board of Ed. So, uh, I asked to do this tonight, so under, um, Mister Swain's advice, so we wouldn't be up on the deadline on April fifth, which is, would be the last possible day, um, to pass this resolution. So, um, at this time, I'll ask the administration to respond.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, joining me from, uh, ACDS is Ms. Koch, and from our school system, Mister Shagnovich, and our county attorney, Mister Swain. I am ready for this one, this one's a big deal, it's a long time coming. We're, we're really excited to be, uh, supporting this resolution this evening. This is, uh, gonna be the first, uh, community center built in this county in a long, long time. It's gonna serve a really, uh, important need in. in in a important part of our county, who has been waiting a long time for to see this project come to fruition and and getting the land i- is huge. So I really wanna thank everybody that's been involved in this. There's still uh a lot of work to do uh to to bring this project to fruition. But getting uh the the land and getting this project moving is is a huge sigh of relief uh for for this administration. And I know Ms. Koch has put a lot of uh blood, sweat, and tears into making this a reality. So we really do um appreciate the council moving this this evening, uh so we don't waste a single moment to get this project moving.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Are there any questions from the council? Crickets? Cicadas, soon to be cicadas. Madam Secretary, please call the role on resolution number twenty-one twenty-one.
Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Radvian. Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volpe is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
And Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution number twenty-one twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, and thank you to the panel. Um or to our attendees, including Mr. Shagnovich. We will move on to resolution number twenty-two twenty-one. Madam Secretary, please read its title.
Resolution number twenty-two twenty-one. Resolution appointing Michelle E. Bollaire as county auditor.
Okay, um I am the lead sponsor on this, but um Mr. Pruski, Ms. Rockin, Ms. Pickard, and Ms. Fiedler have co-sponsored it with me. Um we had, um as folks may know, um Ms. Smith advised us of her intention to retire as of April first, and so we have been hard at work um trying to find um an excellent replacement, was of course, we need no less than excellence from our county auditor. And so we were very pleased to find that Ms. Bollaire, who is an assistant county auditor, um has been uh you know, trained up and is ready to go. And so this resolution appoints her county auditor effective April first. And I'll just say on on everyone's behalf to um to Ms. Smith on her last meeting with this county council, thank you very much for all the sacrifices that you've made and the hard work that you've put in, the the ten and twelve-hour and sixteen-hour days at times, dealing with the floods um and having to rebuild the the personnel and staff of the office. You've really shouldered a heroic burden, and it's been very important contribution to the coun- to the council, allowing us um and helping us to do our jobs properly into the county as a whole. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh as the most senior member on the council, I also wanna thank Ms. Smith. Her professional work ever since she's worked in this county has done a lot for our county residents, this council, and entire county government. We can't thank you enough. Obviously, uh Michelle Bullier's uh obviously working and having Ms. Smith help her kinda guide her into the next steps, but we just wanna take a moment to to thank the entire audit office. You know, that's kind of an office that a lot of people forget about, but they're probably one of the most important, right, in terms of the work that we do with the blue letters the council gets. Um checking the budget, getting the numbers, where we're going down to the end. So again, thank you for all your help, Susan. We really appreciate you. Um and and hope that uh whatever you decide to do, retirement, joy, whatever, um that that you really enjoy it. You deserve it. And uh again, I'm happy to support uh Ms. Bullier and and glad that uh we're there. But thank you again.
Thank you, Bo, and all of you, all of the council. And uh thanks for my staff, too, for putting in all the extra work and being so eager to learn. So um thanks to them as well.
Any anyone else have a comment? If not, uh Madam Secretary, please call the role on resolution number twenty-two twenty-one.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volpe is absent. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
And Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution number twenty-two twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Second?
Hare, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, April fifth, twenty twenty-one. And again, we will also have our special GDP work session on Thursday, April first, at six PM. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.